Clevenger.
Here.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Sally Richardi. And Rich West.
Here.
All are present.
Great, thank you Karen. I'm going to skip over the pledge of allegiance and move on to approval of minutes from previous meeting.
Do you want to do the reminder that it's being recorded?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, everyone, these online Zoom meetings are recorded, so if you do participate at any point in the meeting, you're giving your permission to be on the recording, and therefore you need to know that. And then also, if you would mute your phones, Jonathan will likely keep you muted until the time that we have input, just so that the council members and everyone can hear each other. And with that, we'll get started with approval of minutes.
And since you just got minutes this afternoon, I'll wait until the next meeting to ask for approval, if that's okay?
Great, yeah, that's totally fine Karen. And then may financial reports, do you want us to do those at this meeting?
You know, actually, you can wait until the next meeting. I'd like to have Bill look them over before I ask for approval, just as a new procedure.
Sure, sure. Okay, so then we'll move on to the ordinance 2020/003 amending the organization of the Culver Police Department. We did this on first read already. Any questions for Jonathan or Wayne about this, or any motions to approve on second read?
This is Rich, I would move that we approve on second reading.
Bill Githens, I second.
Okay, Karen roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rolls and pass on third read?
Bill Githens, I move.
It's Rich, I second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi. Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you Karen. Next on the agenda, we have the Chamber of Commerce fireworks. We addressed this at our special meeting last week, and Rich West requested that it be added to the agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to Rich.
Thank you Jenny. Yes, I apologize for asking that this be added to our meeting this evening, but after giving it a considerable thought over the last few days, I am in a situation where I think, or I know I need to change my opinion and vote on this situation. I think that while I would still believe that it would be better to postpone the event till later, I think that it's inconsistent to deny the event request because the governor has opened the state, our park is open, the beach is open. I think my previous position was probably being overly paternalistic in terms of trying to assure the health and safety of the community. I still have that concern, but the event is going forward anyway, and I think that it, the risk and concerns are best addressed by the plan as presented in the chamber request. I'm also concerned that there's a perception that perhaps the town does not support the business community or listen to its constituents. I think obviously the support of the business community is very, is very strong and evident by our recent programs to support the business communities during the COVID situation with grants and with forgiveness on utility bills. So I think out of consistency with, with all of that, and considering that the best plan going forward to address the risk is to approve the event permit, I would move that the special event permit presented by the Chamber of Commerce for the Fourth of July fireworks be approved with the stipulation that a permit is issued by the DNR and the the plan put forth by the chamber in the event request is followed.
So Jim Clevenger, I have a question about this based on how Rich stated that. We had a special meeting last week on Wednesday, Jim, and there was a special event request form that the chamber had submitted. Part of that submission was, the chamber was going to provide funding for a police posse for security in the park. They were going to put some signs in the park to encourage social distancing. They had applied for their DNR permit, and so at the special meeting on Wednesday, we had input from the chamber, several people in the public spoke up about the event, and then we had some people who spoke against it. But in general, we had this long meeting, and then the motion last Wednesday was to not approve that special event permit. So three of the council members agreed with that motion, two of us, Sally and I, did not. So I guess my question is, we've already turned down that special event, the chamber hasn't reapproached us or resubmitted it, or changed anything on it. Rich has changed his mind about it and is suggesting we approve it, but in the meantime, also at that Wednesday meeting, because it wasn't approved, I had suggested that if DNR did approve of it, we would still have a security issue on our hands and a potential for a crowd in the park. So the council approved, still providing security and measures in the event DNR did approve of that permit to have fireworks on the lake. So I guess my question is, if Rich is now saying to approve it, but it's not being resubmitted by the chamber, how would this get handled?
How would the state handle it?
I'm not questioning DNR, I'm more or less questioning, you know, part of that permit was that the chamber was going to go to the expense of providing a security posse and other things that we then turned around and agreed to cover the expense of. And I think Rich is suggesting we now approve that event permit, but that would cost the chamber funding if we approve it as is. Do you follow?
Yeah, I do. Is the chamber still willing to go along with the original proposal and submission and event request?
I would assume that would have to go before their board, but I do know we probably have chamber people on the call. Does anyone want to weigh in on that from the chamber?
This is Elizabeth, Chamber President, and you're right, that would have to be something that my board would have to discuss. I came to the meeting, prepared paperwork all night out to get a main vote. So honestly, I haven't talked anymore about it. It definitely had to be something that's talked about amongst our board now.
Okay.
I didn't, I'm not sure I picked all of that up, but I think she said that she needs to take it back to the board before she could answer that question.
Yeah, I think that's what she said. Elizabeth, can you just give us a yes or a, maybe a thumbs up or thumbs down that we're understanding you correctly, because it came in a little fuzzy?
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. Okay, so Elizabeth, just confirm that what Jim summarized, that it would likely have to go back to the chamber board to determine if they would still want to cover what was in that original event permit. So Rich, in terms of your motion, do you want to?
I'm willing to amend the motion and to suggest that we will go forward with the plan as presented by the chamber, and the town did make the commitment to pay for the security services if necessary, but if the chamber in their good graces feels that it can or should do so, that can be addressed at a later point. So I won't make the condition of, of the motion to approve the permit. Is that, is that clear? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's understood, I think it's clear to me, you're basically wanting to reconsider, and you'll approve the permit request, but it's not conditioned upon apparently the payment of the security, which was in the original permit request. Correct?
Correct.
The town's still going to pay for it, but we're going to approve the permit. So whatever does it make if you approve the permit or not?
Who's that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure who was speaking. Okay, whoever it was isn't, isn't speaking now, so.
Jenny.
Council, any discussion points or other motions?
Jenny, Bill Githens. I don't know how many people have actually read the special event permit. I've got a copy of it, and one of the things that it said in the special event permit, and let me read, it says, "Describe cleanup and waste removal plan." There is none. So if anything, there is no cleanup in the park or no removal of any debris, you know, that was proposed by the chamber. I can also tell you that John Karas, who is our DNR representative, has said that the local DNR has approved it, says, "That being the case, the fireworks permit has been approved at the local level," but he said it is being reviewed at the executive level. So we don't know, we don't, there is no formal approval by the DNR at this point in time. And my vote will not change. I don't know how we, how Wayne, how many people Wayne has on board yet to provide security, and I'm just concerned for the welfare of the community and the town's folks, and as well as the academy. I still believe that we need to have fireworks. I'm not opposed to celebrating our nation's holiday and/or fireworks. I just think, you know, it'd be better postponed till later date, say Labor Day. That's all I have.
Jenny has a point of order. I mean, there still hasn't been a second to the motion.
Yeah, is there a second to Rich's motion?
This is Sally, I guess if that's a motion, I'll second.
Sally, can you speak a little louder into the speaker?
Yeah, I'm not sure where my speaker is, but I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion from council? We heard from Bill Githens, anyone else? Okay, I do want to respond to, to your comments, Bill, and also to this motion, you know, just because we went through all of this last week. First, we already agreed as the town that if the event does go forward, we're responsible for ensuring public safety. So last week's decisions did not change a potential date for this. So regardless of your feelings about it, we did agree that if the event did occur because DNR made the approvals, we would handle the funding of security and ensure public safety as we should.
Right.
Second, I know that because the chamber had plans to put out some signs for social distancing throughout the park, they did in fact create and print those signs, and under council issues, I will bring that up, because they would still like to put those out, which I think is a generous and courteous act that will help out Amber and the town in terms of the park. I do think that the damage was already done in terms of last week's decision. That's just my personal opinion that we sent the wrong message to the community in last week's vote. I appreciate the fact that Rich has had time to reconsider it. I've heard from a number of people on this issue and, and felt that we should have made this decision a week ago and avoided some of the, the public damage that has resulted from this. But Karen, I, we have a, a motion from Rich, a second from Sally, can you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Clevenger.
Nay.
Mr. Githens.
Nay.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mrs. Richardi. Mr. West.
Aye.
Three, four, two opposed.
Okay, and I just want to also reiterate the fact that Rich's motion does not hold the chamber responsible for funding any kind of security at this point. That's up to the chamber at this stage. Okay, so moving on, on the agenda, next we have regional stellar plan update. I don't have any updates from the Crossroads Committee that have, nothing has changed since two weeks ago. We have an upcoming Crossroads meeting later in July, and that's really it for now unless I've missed anything, Jonathan.
The only thing I have on it was the electronic message board sign, just an update on that. Shannon McLeod is the grant administrator on that project for the county, and the town of Culver will be receiving funds, and we are eligible for one of those signs. Marty Osterbahn was working on that for us originally, and I'm going to be taking that over for him. And the thing we need to do right now is select a location, and looking at what the other communities are doing and, and kind of the, what the project is designed to do, it's really an attempt to communicate throughout the county and also attract people whose attention we might not otherwise get, who might be traveling kind of at the edge of our community. So keeping those things in mind, the spot that I think Marty and I, and I think Jenny had been aware of this at least, we're leaning towards was Culver High School near, probably near where the current Culver Community sign is that faces 10 and 17 facing north. And would just like to, I guess I'd like to ask for a vote of, of council to approve recommending that site, and the reason being, just so you guys are aware, the final design's not complete. They're going to work on it with the county, but just want to make sure you guys know what's going in there. I believe it will be compliant with our sign ordinance, but just in case, some of the electronic messaging, want to be consistent with it throughout the county, partially just to save funds so that, you know, we can all use the same company and save funds that way, but also just making sure they're all the same in terms of display and that they can be used to relay messages throughout the county. So I'd like your approval for moving forward with that site pending the okay from Culver Community Schools.
Sorry. A question, is that on school property or on the, the road easement or?
Yeah, looking, looking at the right of way for this, the state, I, I think it'll be on Culver Community Schools property entirely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the other thing about this that the council should know, this was originally a regional stellar project that we had funding through Okra to do, but they encouraged us to apply for the COVID grant application round. And by getting some grant money through that, it frees up some of our stellar regional plan money. And the original idea also, you know, in addition to being able to communicate during a pandemic on these electronic signs, which is one reason they funded it, it would have been great to have these during this COVID pandemic. But the original purpose was also to cross promote the communities in Marshall County for tourism purposes. It was also to promote downtown areas, perhaps have Main Street and Visitor Center and Chamber, and anyone doing business development and marketing in the community could put messaging on the boards. The way it worked out with the COVID application is each community will pretty much own their own messaging, but the county and Marshall County Tourism will be allowed to use the boards as well because they have funding in the grant application. So if the county wanted to let everyone know property taxes are due on October 15th or something, you know, they might want to put a message out through all the boards across the county. But if, if, you know, we set up a COVID testing site in Plymouth, that kind of message would also hit these boards. And the thought behind that location near the school was that we could promote traffic coming down the highway, point them to our downtown area. The school would also be able to get some usage out of the electronic sign. It seemed like a good win-win location. So does anyone have a motion to approve that location pending the schools' approval of it as well?
Jenny, this is Sally, I will make that motion.
Okay, thanks Sally. Do you have a second on that?
This is Rich, I will second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thanks Karen. Anything else Jonathan on regional stellar?
Nope.
All right, we'll move to stellar plan update.
At the Beach Lodge, we had most of landscaping completed last weekend. They were backordered on one particular tree, so we've still got, they're still going to have to come back and do that. Locks and keying, last I knew, had not been completed as per our specs, so we were waiting on that. And sprinkler system inspection, those are the big three things left. So we haven't had a request to release that final payment or retainage yet from the, from Michiana. On Cavalier Park, still looking at June 30th for a substantial completion date, and we'll do a walkthrough and a punch list sometime around, you know, in the next week or so, as they get ready and request that. I think today they were working on paving, so they are very close. And then just also wanted to say thanks publicly to the Marshall County Community Foundation, Union Township, who both made four-year commitments. I can't believe we're in year three of those already, but we saw those come in, and it's awesome to see those projects nearing completion and that, you know, they've stuck with us, invested in us early, and are still there by our side. So thank you to them.
Yeah, thanks for remembering to do that too Jonathan.
That's all I had for stellar.
All right, if there's no questions from the council, we can move on to Town Manager's report.
For an update on the municipal utility, municipal electric utility, NIPSCO reached out and asked to meet with our group, so we're working on setting up a date for that. And at the CRC meeting, they met since our last council meeting, they approved a 50-50 split on financial expenses related to that. So that would be any attorney's fees or the proposal we had from Buzz Krone for financial advice as we look to meet with NIPSCO on that process. And so the CRC approval was a 50-50 split of fees not to exceed $7,000, and I'd ask for the same motion from council that council would accept the other 50% of those fees not to exceed $7,000.
Jonathan, Bill Githens, didn't we talk about that last time and say the amount was going to be $5,000?
The proposal we had last time was just Buzz's, that's all we looked at, and his was a range of 3,000 to 7,000. So to get to the, the total for each, we didn't have a separate proposal from Jim Clevenger to be our legal representation. He'll be doing that under our attorney's contract, but there will be additional fees.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
Sally, I'll make motion to approve up to 7,000.
Do you have a second?
Splitting it 50-50.
This is Rich, I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Nay.
Mr. Githens.
Nay.
Mrs., Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay, thank you Karen. Back to you Jonathan.
Yeah, under utilities, I have a proposal from Lock Mueller Group, which is an engineering firm in Fort Wayne, to validate our water loss audit. So this is a new thing the state is requiring for every public water system this year. And it's basically, you know, an audit of your lost water throughout the year. It's due this summer. Bob's taking the class and certification to perform the audit, but you also need a separate validator to submit it. And this was the most reasonable fee we could find from anyone was $1,500 to do that. So I'm asking for approval for the water loss audit proposal from Lock Mueller Group for $1,500.
This is Rich, I will move that we approve that contract.
Sally.
Okay. Rich motion, Sally seconded, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Community crossing matching grants will be due sometime in July. We're expecting them to be more competitive than past years because NDOT's likely to have less funding from gas tax moving forward. But we would like to apply again this year. I will update you guys as I, as Bob and I work on those. We do have kind of a tentative list that he put together. The one thing I wanted to mention, we both would like to do a crack sealing program and make that part of our application, which we haven't done crack sealing in town for a few years now. And it is something that Produz Altap Program, which provides a lot of road maintenance education, it's something they're really recommending communities take more advantage of. So that'll be part of our application this year. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and I should have a list for you probably at our first meeting in July. I think that's all I had for utilities. I didn't see Bob here either. Make sure he's not on. Bob, are you on? No. Okay. For EMS, our hiring committee met, and we decided to post a director position on our website and advertise in the Citizen Pilot and some of the surrounding weeklies. The position will be posted until this, until July 6th. And thank you to Scott and Stephen and all of our part-time medics who have really stepped up these weeks and got us covered through June. So thanks to all of them. And apologies if this is on the claims list, I didn't see it for tonight, but we did have the air conditioning unit and the EMS office quit working. I gave everybody a heads up on this, but I asked for approval for the quote from Quality Comfort for replacement of the air conditioner and furnace for the EMS department, the amount of $6,800.
Okay, do you want to just do that with the claims Jonathan?
Actually, it's not on there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was there. I, I didn't see it, but okay.
Yeah, okay, then let's do it separately. Do I have a motion to approve the claim for the air conditioner for quality comfort?
So move, Bill Githens.
Second Sally, Richardi.
Okay, roll call.
Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
On the trash rates, our attorney, Mr. Clevenger, and I both had some concerns about the proposed contract that we were sent by Republic Services. I've sent their staff some of Jim's notes on it, and I have not heard back from them. We're trying to schedule a meeting or at least a response from them back. The current agreement ends on June 30th, so we'll keep you guys posted. I would assume we'll be able to carry over the current one, at least for a few weeks if we need to. I, I haven't got a sense of urgency from them got a sense of urgency from them on it either, but we have responded with our comments and are kind of waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
Most of our employee restrictions related to COVID-19 are lifted after July 4th. But there are some things I'd like to make it clear that we are keeping in place. And I sent along some reopening guidelines for Phase 5, and I'd ask for your approval of those. The big thing I think is maintaining our employee temperature screening policy indefinitely at this point, as well as, you know, social distancing, distancing guidelines at work wherever possible and our pandemic leave policy. Just making clear that we're keeping all those in place moving forward.
All right. Any questions?
I would ask for a motion to approve the town reopening guidelines for Phase 5.
Thanks Jonathan.
So move.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thanks Karen.
The Adaptive Ski Clinic that we approved last meeting, just to know, they did contact us the day after that meeting and let us know they're not going to move forward with it. It's been canceled. It was scheduled for July 23rd and 24th. Other special event permits, the Black Lives Matter Culver Focus on Education demonstration. I think Evan's on here and he was present for our last meeting to give us a, an overview of it. That event, the request is for Friday, July 10th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the park near the West Pavilion. Evan provided the special event request. It is intended to be a family-friendly event with focus on the role that the Black Lives Matter movement plays in education. And I think Evan's here, I'll give him a second if he wants to add anything to that.
Okay.
Evan, if you want to unmute, if there's anything you want to add, I'll give you a second.
Hello.
There you are.
All right. Did you hear me? Okay, awesome. Hi, yes. No, I think that's very accurate. You know, we just wanted to make sure that it was accurately represented as a, you know, demonstration of support for our students, faculty and community members of color. We want to, we've, we've been asked to show, you know, visible support for them in this really difficult time. And we're hoping to do that in a family-friendly listening dialoguing event. Definitely also want to make sure that we're following kind of COVID guidelines, so we're going to make sure we have some people to help us out there as well. And, you know, we're really looking forward to an event where, you know, it's lawn chairs, towels, some, some time to listen, some time to reflect. And we look forward to having a lot of you there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Evan.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the special event request for Black Lives Matter Focus on Education for July 10th.
Jenny, I have a question. This is Clevenger.
Uh huh.
Evan, I'd like to, is Evan still on the line?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, you mentioned a demonstration. Are you talking about an actual physical demonstration? Or are you talking about just a static display with a booth with manned with people?
No, we are talking about a demonstration of support in the sense that we would have kind of a place where you could have speakers have, say, we've been talking to some faith leaders about having, say, an invocation, having a prayer and maybe having some speakers. But then the kind of demonstration of support is just that people would come, be able to sit down, maybe, you know, have, maybe be wearing a shirt, maybe have a sign or something, but we're very much thinking of a distanced event where people are separated with their families. But so, that, that's the idea.
So Evan, this is Rich West, a question. So when you say demonstration, you're not talking about a march or mobile movement of any type?
No, absolutely, no, yeah, definitely not.
Yeah, I think Mr. Clevenger's probably referencing, we received a couple of emails where the newspaper article at WKVI, I think, used the word demonstration in the headline of the article. So it may have implied the feel of a rally or protest. And that definitely gave some people pause, so we received some email messages about that. I'm assuming that's where the source of the questions coming from, Bill, right?
That's correct, Jenny.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns for Evan or Jonathan on this? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Or, you know, a motion to approve or not approve the event request?
This is Sally. I thought that we approved the event, but that didn't have a date on it.
Yeah, I think we asked Evan to choose a date after, on July 4th or after July 4th. And the date that he has determined is July 10th. So we, I guess Jim, that's another one. We really already approved the request, we just didn't have a date yet.
Yeah, Jim Clevenger jumping in. I think you should do a motion to, you know, modify your previous motion to clarify the date.
Okay.
This is Sally again. I will make a motion to approve the event dates for the 10th and the event as it was proposed.
This is Rich. I will second that motion.
Okay, roll call please Karen.
Mr. Clevenger.
Present.
Mr. Githens.
I think, Bill, I think you said present. Do you mean aye or?
I mean a neutral.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor.
Okay, thanks Karen.
Supportive.
Next up is another special event from the Culver Union Township Library. It's for a fun run scheduled for June 27th from 7:30 AM until noon. They're planning to stagger their start times and use the sidewalks rather than the streets to avoid having to close the streets for the event. And we, all the staff have reviewed it and feel like it's in compliance. So again, I'd ask for a motion to approve the library fun run on June 27th.
Jonathan, is there an expected number for this turnout, or are they within the, I think you can have what, 150 now?
Yes.
We don't generally get that many people for races and runs and.
No, typically we don't see that many. They're usually under that. I mean, even the triathlon's not much larger than that, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Number on it. I didn't bring the copy home with me, but I know they were expecting less than what was allowed, yes.
Yeah, I think la, last year, one of these was like 40 people total, staggered times, et cetera. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Jenny, this is Bill Githens. Yeah, it's the Dewey Decimal Dash. And we're not expecting probably but maybe 30 to 40 people and it's ma, basically going to be families. So.
Okay.
What day of the week is that?
It is this Saturday, right?
Saturday, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do you have a second?
Bill Clevenger seconds.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
I'm going to abstain because I'm on the library board.
Mrs. Monroe.
I'm gonna say aye, but I just want to make a comment that I don't see how this is any different from voting on fireworks on the 4th if it's family-oriented and an unexpected unknown number attending. But I'm an aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstain.
I have one more special event request, I think. It's for the, let me find it here. Golf cart poker run on August 8th. It's five stops around town with different games, the goal being to raise funds this year for the Boys and Girls Club. It is the same day that the triathlons normally held, but it will be late enough, late enough in the day, we think, to avoid any real conflicts with traffic or anything like that, so. Wayne's reviewed it, I've reviewed it, and we're asking for a motion to approve the golf cart poker run on August 8th.
Motion to approve or any questions?
Move to approve.
This is Rich, I second.
Roll call.
Mrs., Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you Karen. Now that you broke the record on special event requests, Jonathan, back to you.
Yeah, we didn't have any of those for a while, so we're catching up. Marty Osterbahn has submitted a letter of resignation from the Plan Commission. And many thanks to Marty for his years of service and his commitment to Culver. I know he was a driving force on our Complete Streets Committee on many of our ordinance rewrites. He's served on our technical review committee and done just about anything anyone could ask for him on the Plan Commission, so we are really going to miss him. Sorry to hear that he needed to step down, but he let us know that was the case, so just wanted to let council know and especially Jenny because effective immediately then, we'll have an opening that is a town council president appointment. And Marty's position was one that needs to be a town resident and basically a non-Republican, a Democrat Libertarian or any other non-Republican party member to maintain a politically balanced board as required by the Indiana Code. So my suggestion was to advertise for the opening. And Jenny, if you want to set the date, if we did July 9th, we could have to review at the next council meeting, or if you want to go out further than that, that's fine too.
July 9th, okay with me Jonathan. And, you know, I, I know that Marty's also going to step off of the MCEDC board, so we can go ahead and advertise that as well. And that's a town council decision for that appointment. So, and I just wanted to reiterate what you said and thank Marty. Not only did he step up for the Plan Commission and the MCEDC Board, but he gave his heart and soul to the Marshall County Crossroads Regional Stellar Team that got the designation for Marshall County, and he played such an important role in that chairing the Marketing and Communications Committee. Marty does everything with a big smile and a lot of joy in his heart, and he's so much fun to work with. Such a hard worker, and I know you, you agree with me on that Jonathan, that he, he's been an amazing Culver citizen for all of us, so definitely want to publicly thank him, and if all the people on the call see him, please give him a nice elbow click or purelled handshake or whatever that may be.
Yeah, good point Jenny. He was great on, on the Stellar Committee as well, no doubt.
Get that advertised council and we'll, we'll do the MCEDC appointment sometime in July.
The last item I had was just that, as far as meetings in July, I've talked to Bill about this, about the library, and I think we're going to move forward with all of our public meetings in July in the library. They have two rooms that would be available that are both larger than our council meeting room. And I'd still like to do some forms of, some form of teams as well. So if people want to view or call in from home, they don't have to come in the room if they don't want to. We'll, we'll have to kind of experiment with that a little bit, and it may take a couple of meetings before we get the hang of it, but we'll at least give it a shot at that first meeting and see how it goes. And if everybody's good, we'll plan on council meetings, Plan Commission, redevelopment, BZA, everyone in July meeting in the library.
Okay.
Jonathan Andrew is, is going to make himself available to set up the Zoom and show how our system works at the library.
Awesome.
Jonathan, could I suggest that we have to do an assessment of the capacity of that room? I mean, I know that completely open, but I'd like to, to exercise a little bit of social distancing and then to publicize that as well.
Did you say, set a limit on how many could actually come in, Rich?
Yes, to assess the room sizes and, and if there's a second room or overflow could, could be if, if technology permits to to broadcast into there, but I would like to look at that capacity for the room.
Sure.
Yeah, I do like the idea of the recordings and doing a teams sort of thing, even beyond this whole COVID situation. I think it's really nice that people can call in if they want to. They don't have to make a special trip into the town hall or in this case, the library. We've had a lot more public participation and people calling in ever since we started the Zoom. And I just feel like we should keep that up out of fairness to the public and giving them the opportunity to always be able to participate. I personally appreciate it, so.
Yeah, and just the, one thing you may hear more from me on is, I think some of the CARES Act funding that's available to the town could be used towards technology-related expenses to help do that. So that's something, you know, Karen and I have talked a little bit about, but I'm probably going to be researching more over the next couple of weeks and may have a proposal. Just, there may just be another laptop or something like that, just to help facilitate meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's great Jonathan.
I think it's a great idea. Is there a way, are you able to track attendees? In other words, so for, for documentation on who from the public is attending? I mean, I think that would be an interest. I, I think we anecdotally get, get good feedback on it, but to actually have some documentation on who is attending from the public would be good.
Yeah, Rich, I don't know if you guys can see it, but when I click on, there is a link for meeting attendees during the meeting, I can see exactly who's in it, and at the top it gives me a count. And you can download that afterwards. I, I haven't done that. I don't know if you can go back afterwards, but I know when a meeting's open, you can download the attendees, so you have a list of who all was there, which if you have a public hearing could come in handy. And then also, you know, we post them on YouTube usually the day or so after, and you can track, you know, a number of views and things like that on there too.
Good, thank you.
And that's all I have for my report.
Okay, thanks Jonathan, appreciate it. Department head reports are next, and the first one's EMS, and I assume that your report on EMS will suffice for that. The next, we have the Fire Department. Ken Vandapuddy, are you on the call tonight?
Yeah, I'm on.
Hi Ken.
Yeah, the other thing I have is the delivery of our aerial truck is still scheduled for August. The latest pictures are on our Facebook page. If anybody doesn't have Facebook and wants those pictures, I can email them to you. And then also, we've canceled the Fireman's Festival after we found out that Lions Club is canceled because we co-chair that event. So we'll be canceling that for July.
Okay, thank you Ken.
And Jonathan EMB, I did see them today repairing the issue we had on the approach.
Okay, good, yeah. One of the paving checklist items we had that we weren't satisfied with was near the fire station, so I'm glad they got back and fixed that, Ken.
Okay.
Great, thank you Ken.
Yep.
And next, we have the Police Department. Wayne, I know you're still on the call. Anything to report from the Police Department?
I don't really have much right now. I did receive a special event permit. I it's regarding the fireworks. I had a citizen ask to have the street closed to avoid cars parking on the street and traffic problems with them getting in and out of their driveway and emergency vehicles getting up and down the street. I know it's kind of late. Normally we ask for permits to be issued at least 30 days or more in advance. But under the circumstances, I mean, I don't know if it's something. I don't know if it's something that the Board wants to address.
Oh, I guess, do we, do, I know we do some closures at Lake Fest for parking purposes. Is that specific to the fireworks? Like, do you think we would be safer and better off to do some closures?
Honestly, I don't know if it would affect any more than what's going on now. The street kind of dead ends into an alley. It's Harding Court is where it's at.
Okay.
The requestee was Patty Stalling.
And the idea is to put, to close off Harding Court?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I know there's like an alley on that back side. But it's a real pain to turn around in that street. I used to have a house on that street. So is she wanting to close, close it at the Lake Shore Harding Court side, or the backside of it?
At Lake Shore.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues with closing that section so that people aren't parking on Harding Court?
Well, Jenny, I, I have a comment. I have a difficult time just doing it for one street. And I'm not advocating that we do it for all the streets, but I think you know, just the fact to do it for one homeowner. I'm not strongly in favor of that.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Sally. You know, if that particular road might as well be dead end for the alley at the end of it. If you go up there with any sizable vehicle, you're not gonna make it back out.
Yeah.
And so, on a night where people might be hunting for parking places, rather than have them go up there and block the entire road so that nothing moves, I think it probably would be best to go ahead and just barricade it off.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been on that road, and that alley is anytime I took that alley, it's pretty overgrown. A smaller car could get through there, but trucks and SUVs are gonna have a tough time with that overgrown area. I, I tend to agree with you, Sally. I do think it's unique as far as the roads that run north and south. That one is a, a real pain.
The reason I say that is it really doesn't, it really doesn't come out, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
If you could drive through easily and get out the other side, there wouldn't be any reason. But I can see your point that, you know, most likely, any, anybody that goes in is coming out.
Yeah. So, the, the special event perm, or the, the permit that she's requesting, Wayne, would be to block it down at Lake Shore and Harding Court. I'm assuming the neighbors have, is anyone on the call from Harding Court that can speak to whether the neighbors are okay with this? I mean, those petitions can be moved for the people who live there, right? Where they could move it to get in and out, but the idea is to keep other traffic from parking on that street, which would disallow cars from moving in and out of there?
Yes, that's why I understand it.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve that or not approve that from council members?
Jenny, just a question, I guess, for, for Wayne on this. With other streets, I mean, that are wider, I, I see that probably is not the same problem, but for something like Forest Court, would we consider no parking on one side of that street, just because of how narrow it is, or? I mean, I was just wondering if there's a larger plan than just Harding Court without blocking all the other streets?
I think with Forest, you can keep going north. With Harding Court, you basically hit a, a house at the top of the hill, and then you have to exit out through
Yeah.
an alley.
Okay.
That's pretty narrow.
Yeah, I was just thinking of the, if there are cars parked on both sides of Forest with emergency vehicles getting through, if it's light enough, but I'll leave that to Wayne's discretion.
Generally, in the past, on like Liberty Street and Forest Place, it's no parking on one side. And I can't recall off the top of my head where we've had a problem with people trying to park both sides of the street. So vehicles are at least able to go either up and down. It's just a matter of whether if you meet a car or not. But, I mean, there's a lot of streets in town that are like that, that are narrow, and you know, when you meet a car, well, you just gotta try and work around each other.
Okay. Wayne, I'm assuming you'd like a, a formal motion on this?
Yeah, I mean, if the town chooses to block it off, I, I don't have a problem either way, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion from council?
Sally, you're on mute, I think.
Thank you. I was on mute. I'll make a motion to barricade, allow that Harding Court to be barricaded to the north.
This is Bill Githens, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Retardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, back to you.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. I don't know if Amber's on the call or not, because I don't, usually I see her name. But Amber, if you're on the call and have anything to report for the park?
I don't think she's here tonight. I think they had a staff event, so.
Yeah, I, I know. They've been kind of crazy busy over there trying to maintain sanity. And I don't think Bob is on the call either for anything additional on utilities. So I will move on to Boards and Commissions. Does anyone need to report from the Plan Commission or the BZA? All right, I'll move on to anything to report from the Redevelopment Commission.
Our next meeting is July 20th. I am assuming at this point it will be either at the Library or the Beach Lodge, and will be publicized accordingly.
Okay. Anything from the Tree Commission? All right, Karen, I'll move to the Clerk's report.
Yes, I have five invoices, or five claims for approval. Two of them are for Miller Insurance Group. One is for $4,116, and that's the EMS Accident Insurance Policy. And the other is $3,059, and that's the Fire Accident Insurance Policy. The next one is DM Music LLC for $2,000, and that's for one of the artists for the next concert in the park. Then there's Indiana Department of Workforce Development for $1,0647.43, and that is for unemployment for a past employee. The way our unemployment is set up, we do not pay an unemployment tax going along. But then when someone does file unemployment, our experience account is charged, so we're responsible for some of that. And finally, Tim Uhas, $3,306.25, and that's for the peer installation.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims over $1,500?
Bill Githens, so move.
This is Rich, right second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Retardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor. The next thing I have is one of the people that were, one of the, one of the residents that was awarded the Sidewalk Program called and said that he has decided not to do his project, and it was one of the larger ones. So it freed up $6,500, which would be enough to take care of the next four applicants and allow them to complete their projects if they're still desirous of doing so. So I would make a request to approve the next four projects on the Sidewalk Program list.
This is Rich, right, so move.
This is Sally, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clav?
Aye.
Mr. Githens? Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Retardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor, and I'll reach out to those people tomorrow. The third thing I have is the Townwide Garage Sale. We usually have that back in April, and we're in the midst of COVID restrictions, and the Lions Club reached out to me and said they are planning their flea market sales for July 16th through 18th, and wondered if we would want to either have it this, the weekend before, like we usually do when they have it in the spring, or if we would like to do it on the same day, and maybe do some cross-marketing and promoting. So I would recommend just having the Townwide Garage Sales the same weekend as the Flea Market Sale, which will be July 16th through 18th. So if I could get approval for that.
Do I have a motion for that?
This is Bill Githens, so move.
This is Rachel, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Retardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
All right, and the final thing I have is Cleanup Day and along with the garage sales. We usually have Cleanup Day two weeks later. That was postponed as well. In talking with Bob, he would really like, this year, like to just have one big Cleanup Day, use all four of the boxes that we have available to us, rather than do two Cleanup Days, maybe a month or two apart. And so, in talking with him, I asked him which he'd prefer, the summer or the fall, and he said July 5th, July 25th would be, would be great, which is the weekend after the Flea Market Sale. So people can try to get rid of their junk at their garbage, or, I'm sorry, their garage sale, or they can just pass it over to the Cleanup Day if it doesn't smell, so.
Freudian slip.
It totally was. If you saw the stuff in my house, yes.
That's quite okay, Karen, we follow.
We have a, a motion to approve just the one large Cleanup Day, July 25th.
Okay, do you have a motion for that, please?
This is Bill Githens, so move.
This is Rachel, second.
Roll call.
Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Retardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Great. I think after all the quarantine time people had to do their cleaning, they might be looking forward to that Cleanup Day.
I think so, and not holding it until October, but just to, just to be clear, there's only gonna be one day. We're not gonna do it again in the fall, so.
Okay.
And, and I will say that I'm looking forward to in-person meetings, so I don't have to do roll call anymore.
Great, Karen. I think you've done a fantastic job, though, and thanks for staying on top of that sidewalk program. You know, and keeping track of the funds and, and keeping us up to date, because now knowing four people can do their projects, I know that takes some administrative work, but it's appreciated, and I'm sure those four people appreciate it.
I hope they can get their projects done.
Yeah. Next, we have, oh, and I did want to say you had, under your claims, Tim Uhas was on there with the peer installation invoice. I just want to say appreciate that he worked hard to get that done. We weren't sure about the timing on all of that because of COVID, and he was very patient about all of it, and then worked hard to get it done. So I just want to let him know, we appreciate that. Next, we have the Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Jenny. I hope you saw the, I guess, the report that I emailed to all of the council, Jonathan and Karen, earlier this afternoon, or I guess late this afternoon, having to do with 415 Lake Shore. The, it's sort of in two parts. One has to do with the Public Records Request, and I was just showing to the council that we continue to work with Attorney Martin Gardner, who was hired by our liability insurance carrier to assist in answering that Public Records Access Request, and he's reviewed a number of the documents and were prepared to send most of those that he's reviewed back to, to the attorney representing Mr. Van Hawk. He has a few more to go through, and I assume he'll get that done fairly soon, and, and we'll be able to answer in a timely fashion. We're well ahead of the time that we indicated we'd respond to that Public Records Request. The second point under the 415 Lake Shore, it was maybe of interest to you, which is why I was prompted to send this. The attorney for the Jason Frazier is in Rochester, Andrew Perkins, I don't know if any of you know him. We filed an answer, and if you saw the answer that was attached to that, he, his judgment against Mr. Van Hawk has been set aside and is still under process over in Warsaw. So I'm moving to try and have an entry of default, since Mr. Van Hawk's been served, hasn't hired counsel or answered to the complaint. Not sure we'll ever get anything out of the 27 group, which has been the situation, because it's administratively dissolved. And we, I'm hoping to move that then along and with consents from Perkins, which I don't have yet, and from the Marshall County Treasurer. And so there has been some, some movement along those lines. If anybody has any questions about 415 Lake Shore, feel free to contact me, drop me an email, do whatever, I'll be happy to answer, or answer them here tonight. The second item, not part of the report that I'd sent earlier, and it's just a comment. I found it really interesting that LIFCO learned of our interest about setting up a town utility and approached us first. I'm not quite sure I know what to think about all of that. But I guess we'll find out in the days ahead when our group initially meets with, with those folks. And I think for everybody's interest or understanding, after those initial meetings, we're gonna have a better idea of where we are with all of that, and I think we can give everybody a better idea of the administrative costs going forward. So just wanted to point all of that out. I know Bill Clevenger apparently had some concerns about the fees and whatever, so. That's all I have in my report, and I guess, let me know if you want me to show up at the library, I guess, next time, or do the Zoom thing, or do whatever, so.
I think whatever you're comfortable with, Jim, either way, having you participate, we trust you.
Oh.
It can be on Zoom or in person. We're good with it.
When I started out tonight, I thought I'd do it outside, because it was a nice sunny night, and there for a while, I thought I was gonna get rained on. I or not, but it looked like that's where the clouds were coming from, so. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda, we have our usual utility shut-off ordinance violation, and I'm assuming there aren't going to be any of those. If so, citizens can speak up. But next, we have a citizen input. So if you have citizen input and you want to unmute yourself, please make sure you say your name and then speak, and if, you know, all of you go at the same time, that would not be ideal, but please speak up now if you have citizen input.
Jenny, this is Kevin Berger. I do have some input.
Okay.
Jonathan contacted me, and apparently there's a question about the sign at the paddocks. You and Jonathan had talked about this in the past. Chuck Dewitt, the building inspector, asked us to put in some drive-off areas to help with erosion control. And in being able to do that, we took out the sidewalk that runs, that the town put in that runs along Sand Hill Boulevard. That was part of the long-range plan, but because of being pushed a little bit, we went ahead and did it, and did the drive-off stone for him. And I placed the sign across that, that that sidewalk, just as a protection. The stone that goes in is number two limestone, which is what you see on railroad ballast, so it's not really safe to walk on. So the sidewalk needed to be blocked off, so I put the sign there. Apparently Jonathan's got some requests that that not be there, because it is a sign in the right of way. He suggested I come and ask the board for permission to have the sign there. I did send a picture, if Jonathan wants to put it up, of the sign where it's at, and a picture of the stone showing you what we're dealing with.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Jonathan, do you want to post a picture of that or share it on video?
Yep, give me one second here.
Okay, take your time.
Okay, hopefully you guys can see that.
Yeah, it came through just fine. Council members, can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. Anyone have any problem with that being there? I'm assuming, Kevin, this is obvious, obviously temporary.
It's a temporary sign on a stand, I can move it if you want, but we're going to have to put some other kind of barricade there, so this was a cleaner eater way of doing it than, than just sawhorses.
Okay, because of the sign ordinance, do I have, you, we need approval from council, so do I have a motion to approve leaving the sign there?
It is, Sally, I'll make a motion to approve leaving it there for a temporary basis.
Okay, I have a second.
This is Rich, I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Did anybody else have citizen input? I'm looking for any hands on the list or voices. Okay, doesn't sound like it, so I'll move on to council issues. And so that I don't forget my own council issues, do you guys mind if I go first, because I know I'm going to forget? So I tried to email Jonathan, this is another sign thing, and I have two sign things tonight, but I just tried to email Jonathan a sign that the chamber created when they were planning on doing the fireworks. As you can see, it basically says Lake Shore to Main Street, thank you for social distancing. This actually looks a lot like the branding we've had in Culver, I like the little red house on it, if you can see it anywhere on your screen, kind of matches our Culver logo, I think, really well. These particular signs, the chamber created 40 of these, the size of them is like the, kind of like the signs you're seeing right now in the park with the top 10 seniors, and what you probably saw, the graduating seniors, they're like yard signs. These 40 signs would be placed throughout the park, you know, the area where potentially people would go to watch fireworks, and possibly in some of the businesses, windows, that sort of thing. And I know that Elizabeth has talked to Amber about putting these in the park. It's possible some of these might be in right-of-way along the park edge there on Lake Shore for the fireworks. These could certainly be used beyond the Fourth of July, I personally think that would be a good idea, but I wanted to seek permission for the chamber to put these into, put these out for their Fourth of July fireworks event. So that's what it looks like. If you could let me know if you're okay with these signs with, in the form of a motion?
This is Rich, I move, approve putting the signs where necessary in the park, and if necessary, in the parkway for the event, and to evaluate afterwards, continuing use in the park.
Do I have a second?
Sally, I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Karen.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you. Second sign issue is, last year, we allowed the Farmer Miller family to put a sign up at Academy or 1017 Corner announcing that the corn was ready. They did end up placing it on the Academy's private property, and I assumed worked it out with them, but I just wanted to seek council permission to put that out again. It's a seasonal thing. I think probably everyone I know eats Miller's corn, and if they don't, they probably should. It's quite good and supports a local farm business. But anyway, I wanted to bring that back to council again this year and see if there's approval for that. It's about the size of the signs you just saw, but I don't have a copy of that one.
Bill Githens, so move.
Sally, Richard, I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you, council. And then the final thing I have, and I won't drone on too long about this, been talking to Jonathan, and I mentioned it to Rich, that I think it would be great for us to plan a sort of joint meeting of CRC, council, chamber, Develop Culver, even people who have a strong interest in business development in Culver. And I know we have to do that with social distancing in mind, a big venue, a sort of workshop, and from a timing standpoint, I don't know that we need to do that in the next 30 days, or if we do it this fall. I just want to mention it to council that I would like the support of the council and us facilitating that type of meeting, with the goal being that we do some sort of work session as a council to come up with an agenda for a workshop. Ideally, I think we really need to get these, all of us in the community that have an interest in business, businesses thriving in Culver, coming out of this COVID period and looking at the future in Culver. I think we need to set some common goals and define, define what various organizations are going to do in terms of those goals, and I just think we need to facilitate some sort of joint session, and all of us get on kind of the same page in how to move Culver forward on some, some initiatives that will ensure our businesses that are here are thriving, and that if we do grow Culver in any way, we do so in a smart way, and with some intentional planning behind that. So I wanted to sort of pitch that idea and have you all think that one through a little bit. Jonathan and I'll probably bring that up again in the coming weeks, so that we could potentially firm up a date. I'd love to have Jonathan start, you know, communicating with the various organizations on what might be an ideal time for that. I know the businesses are pretty busy in the summer months, and they're busy still troubleshooting COVID, but I really think we need to, to sort of get our ducks in a row and do something like that. And I'm thinking about something, you know, where we spend lunch together, workshop together. So we'll, we'll plan to have some discussion about that. With budget season coming, we're all going to be together in several meetings through the next few months, and I thought we could organize something like that.
Jenny, as you and I discussed the other day, I think that's a good idea, and I, again, I would suggest we begin to look for a facilitator to run such a meeting. I mean, with, with that number of people, I think bringing in someone with the skills from the outside would be very helpful.
Yeah, I agree. And maybe we can have, we could do a little research on this, figure out what that might cost, and who might be interested in joining that, what dates are going to be possible for people, you know, talk to the chamber, talk to Develop Culver, talk to the CRC, et cetera. Let's all start gathering that information now and figure out what it would cost the town to do that.
Well, I can't speak for CRC, but I think we would certainly be willing to participate in that covering expenses, except we can't pay for food, right, Karen?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so keep it in, in mind, and, you know, Jonathan and I'll keep communicating with you guys about any, anything we come up with from a date and communication standpoint. Okay, so next I'll go to Sally, any council issues for you, Sally?
None at this time.
Okay, any council issues for you, Bill Githens?
None.
All right, any council issues for you, Rich West?
None.
Any council issues, Bill Clevenger?
None.
Okay. Anything else from you, Jonathan or Karen?
No.
Nope.
All right. We'll take a motion to technically adjourn the claims and end the meeting?
Bill Githens, so move.
Rich, I'll second that.
I was hoping somebody would. Final roll call, Karen.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens? Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi? Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Great, thank you. Thanks to everyone, appreciate it, have a good night.
Good evening.
Bye, Jim.
Bye-bye.